Hello.
Wasn't plugged in in there.
All right, here we go. Sorry for the delay. I'd like to call to order the Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. My name is Doug Breskin. I serve as Chair of the Board. To my left, we have Vaughn Dugan, Peter Goodwin, Roger Murray, Steve Webster, who serves as Vice Chair, Kathy Barnard, Jane Nielsen, Brad Harriman, and Julie Jacobs. The first item on the agenda is a preliminary consultation for Atwell on Elm LLC, Site Plan Review, Parking Area 8 Elm Street, Tax Map 204-8. Make sure it's switched on.
No?
Hello? There we go. Got to speak close to the mic. Thank you.
Good evening. Scott Lawler from Norway Plains Associates, here representing Atwell at Elm LLC for a preliminary consultation for their property located at 8 and 14 Elm Street. It's, as the Chair mentioned, it's Tax Map 204, Lot 8. It's a .036 acre parcel, and it's located in the Shoreland Residential Zoning District. It's an existing house and a existing commercial building located on the property. The house is 14 Elm Street, and the commercial building is 8 Elm Street. Some of the folks on the Board may remember this as the formerly known as the Clickety-clack Railroad Attraction and Gift Shop. Atwell at Elm LLC purchased the property in 2022, and it's currently operating as their Atwell, Aquapuncture, and Holistic Health. They share common access off Elm Street through 16 Elm Street, which is currently in the Good Hands Chiropractic and Other Businesses. The buildings are serviced by Town Water and Sewer. Currently, there's approximately five parking spaces located on the lot 8, which is the subject lot. And they share with some of the spaces on Lot 9, which is the aforementioned 16 Elm Street. Lot 9 currently has approximately nine parking spaces, and also shares some of the eight with Atwell at Elm. Atwell at Elm is proposing to construct seven porous pavement parking spaces on their property. It's located between the existing commercial business and the existing house. The porous pavement will be installed, and as such, will not increase the amount of impervious coverage on the property. Currently, the property is at approximately 35.8% impervious coverage. With the addition of the proposed seven porous pavement parking spaces, the overall lot would have approximately 12 total parking spaces, which would service both the residential house two spaces and 10 spaces associated with the business. The proposed parking lot is essentially going to be cut into the hillside with a small retaining wall on the back edge to hold up the slope. We're proposing a couple of trees to be installed along the perimeter of the parking lot at sort of that upper level. This applicant, the applicant, has submitted and has received approval from NHDES for the Shoreland permit for this proposed work. We have submitted an application to the Town of Wolfboro for Shoreland, and it's pending. And after we submitted that application, it was advised by the Planning Department that we come before the Wolfboro Planning Board to discuss the project and seek site plan approval. Again, with me here tonight is Carrie Webster, the owner, and between Carrie and myself, we gladly answer any of the questions the Board has. I believe this is a rather simple project, associated with just installing some porous asphalt pavement to create additional parking spaces that the business could utilize. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board.
All right. Anybody on the Board have any questions?
So where is the parking spot or spots for the house portion?
Yes, they're located behind, sort of in between the house and the 16 Elm Street.
So not shown.
Yeah, so we'll add that to the plan.
You have a plan to maintain the pervious spaces there on an annual basis so that they don't get filled in and therefore no longer be pervious?
Sure. As part of the project, we've developed a stormwater management system, I&amp;M Inspection and Maintenance manuals, that outlines how to handle the porous pavement and for cleaning. Essentially, they come in twice a year and do the vacuum of the asphalt to make sure that any of the silt and fines get pulled out of the porous pavement pores and allow it to continue to maintain its infiltration capacity.
Yeah, in fact, I see the maintenance notes are included on the second page of the plan we received.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the Board?
I do have one. We're listing this as two separate numbers, but it seems to be one lot?
It's one Tax Map Lot Number because there's two different structures. I believe 891 assigned at some point, assigned the house as 14 Elm Street, and assigned the existing commercial business as 8 Elm Street.
So it's just the business 911 things?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I have a few questions. What is the gray line that wanders through the plan?
The gray line?
Yeah.
A gray color line.
Yeah, that comes out on, starts on Elm Street and...
Is it the edge of asphalt?
Yeah, that would be the edge of the existing pavement.
Oh, okay. What is the access to Lot 7?
That's essentially, they have it deeded right away that goes through the two parcels to gain access to their parcel.
So that would be between the proposed parking and the existing building?
Correct, and that's currently how it exists today, and we're not proposing anything that would change their access point or their typical access.
And what is the width of the aisle between the proposed parking and...?
It's approximately 16 feet currently, and it'll exist as the same.
Isn't it required to be 22 feet under the parking ordinance for 90-degree parking?
That's assuming a two-way flow. I guess this would be considered two-way flow, Mr. Murray. We felt that, given the extreme low amount of traffic that would be conversing back and forth through there, that 16 feet would be adequate.
Are you proposing any lighting for the new parking lot?
We had not proposed any. We can take that under consideration if the Board feels that that would be a nice addition to the site plans.
And I think under the parking regulations, is that a residential use on Lot 7?
It is, to my understanding.
So I think you're required to have five feet of screening along the boundary there under the parking regs? Is there any kind of an agreement with the Lot 9 on parking, or is this kind of informal?
It's, speaking with the owners, it's an informal discussion or part of the way it's been there. They sold the property to the current owners, and when they sold it, they basically said, you know, we'll still allow the sort of shared parking between the two parcels.
And the second page shows a chain link fence. Is there going to be a chain link fence somewhere?
I put two different types of fence up there because of the height of the wall could be considered a fall hazard, so I both showed chain link fence and the, I believe, a split rail fence. And I was leaving it up to the applicant to put one or the other up there, but it's essentially just for the fall hazard at the back of the retaining wall.
And what's the height, the maximum height?
It's less than four feet. It's about three, three and a half feet. It varies a little bit, but it's less than four feet.
In the application, you talk about a lot coverage of 45%, but then you said that it was 35?
You're absolutely right, Mr. Murray. I noticed that this evening when I was preparing for tonight's meeting. When the application was, the narrative was written, the amount of porous pavement was added into that overall number, and it should not have been. So the number I cited tonight of 35.8% is the correct number. The cover letter was misrepresentating it.
And there's going to be no change in that?
That's exactly correct.
I mean, obviously, we're going to need contours. And then I think there's one other thing, which to me, it seems you're going to need a variance to install a commercial parking lot in the shorefront residence district.
I'll have to look into that.
It's not a permitted use. If you were expanding the use by 25%, you could do it by special exception, but this is more than a 25% expansion, I think.
Have you given any thought to snow removal?
It's a tight lot, and that they'll have to accommodate that. In likelihood, they'll have to haul the snow away or push it, you know.
They already do. It's small there. You said you got a DES permit. What was the permit for?
The DES permit was for the Shoreland, per the plan that is in front of this board.
And they said it was just fine to put this in?
That's correct. The State of New Hampshire issued them a permit for the Shoreland work, the work associated within the Shoreland.
And one last question. You show a proposed impact area of about 1,700 square feet off the end of the parking lot? Is that a wetlands impact, a buffer impact, or...?
No, that's just, that's just overall earth disturbance, because as part of our application to DES, we have to cite what, how much work is being done within the Shoreland zone, and so that's where that number came from.
Oh, okay. This whole area in terms of the woodland buffer is, it's all disturbed, as I think the note on the plan says. You're not disturbing anymore. You just need a permit because you're digging with something.
Correct. It's just, it's lawn now, and it'll be, that's right. There's no trees, there's no, within the 50-foot buffer. The whole parcel lies within 250 feet of the shore.
Any other questions from the Board? I think we're done.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Town of Wolfboro Municipal Electric Department Scenic Road Tree Trimming on Pleasant Valley Road.
Yeah, I'm stepping down because this involves a lot I own. A lot on Pleasant Valley Road that I own. So it's a button, possibly on.
Thank you.
You don't need to keep it.
It's basically a five-inch diameter.
All right. Mr. Murray has stepped down, so Jane, would you serve in Mr. Murray's place?
Yes.
Thank you.
Definitely.
All right.
Hi, my name is Jim Shannon. I'm the utility tech for the Wolfboro Municipal Electric Department. Part of my job is to oversee and manage the maintenance trimming of our utility. I want to just start off with the public by reading the letter that was sent to your Board to kind of give an overview. This was written by Jeremy Mitchell. He's a line work supervisor for our department. He stated, "I am writing to inform you of our plans to conduct tree trimming and vegetation management along Pleasant Valley Road as part of our regular maintenance. The trimming would take place from the intersection of Pleasant Valley and South Main Street, ending at the crossroad. We understand that Pleasant Valley Road is designated as a scenic road through the provision set forth by RSA 231, Section 157 and 158. Our proposed trimming area will not include anything over the 15-inch diameter mentioned within the RSA. We believe that trimming and clearing of the utility right-of-way is necessary as a safety measure to ensure the future reliability of our electric facilities and reduce the risk of outages and protect public safety. The proposed trimming will have a start date of December the 9th with an expected end date of December the 18th. The work will be performed between the hours of 7:00 AM and 3:30 PM on weekdays only. We hope for your support with this project, and thank you for your time." This is preliminary to the trimming that's scheduled for 2025 along with Stonem Road and Pork Hill Road, all scenic roads. So we will revisit this in the early part of 2025. I will be coming back, or one of us will be coming back, for permission to do the three roads for 20 to 25. It'll be a lot more thorough with trees identified and things that are over the size of that piece of ash that's at the chairman's front there. That's nothing bigger on this particular round will be cut than what's right there. We just want to get a jump on it. We have a few more weeks left in this trimming season through the month of December, and we'd like to get started on Pleasant Valley because that will be the first road we do in 2025, spring.
So just one small comment for correction.
Yes, sir.
In the letter you read, you mentioned a 15-inch diameter. However, I believe it's 15-inch circumference as shown here with your example.
Yes, it is.
That's all right. Just wanted to make sure we're all clear.
No, that is exactly right, circumference.
That was it? I had to look it up. I was confused.
So will there be limb cutting and tree cutting, or just limb cutting?
There'll be no tree cutting at this time. There's just, we've identified several areas on Pleasant Valley Road that are, they're trouble areas, and those first seven spans, it consists of about 1,500 feet, 15 poles, seven spans of wire. That circuit is, it's a large circuit. It's South Main Circuit and comes out of Sub-1. It has three phases from the beginning of Pleasant Valley right down to Point Breeze, and then single phase out to Brookfield, and it has about 407 customers, I believe, give or take one or two just on that road alone. So it's very important that we maintain these lines. We have a lot of lines in this town to cut, and we try to do it every 10 years, but unfortunately, Pleasant Valley is one of the roads that we haven't been able to maintain that well. This area, the first seven spans, is a lot of stuff on the primary wire. Just an unsafe situation.
Those photos you shared really did show that the trees are growing through the lines.
Absolutely. There's several pictures that were with your package. It's hard to even see the lines, never mind the poles. We'd like to get started on it. We'd like to clean it up and maintain. Again, nothing will be cut over the circumference of that piece of ash. I think we can get probably 95% of it that way. There are a couple of ash trees in front of Murray's property that are on their property, behind the stone wall. They're obvious trouble trees. Maybe I could work something out with them at the time, but if not now, when we do the road in 2025, I'll be addressing. Those are the types of trees we'll be addressing. Highway Department's already taken several ash trees down on Pleasant Valley Road, all dead, all trouble trees. We've taken a few also, and we'll continue to do that. There's several more that have been identified that need to come out.
And do you work with the tree warden to determine what is dying?
We have in the past. As a matter of fact, the last time I trimmed this road, or we trimmed this road as a town, I worked with Alan Stevens. He was a tree warden at the time. So that goes back. Now you know how long it's been since that road's been trimmed.
It's been a while.
I think Ed Roundy was down there with us when we did the walk. You might have been there too, Peter, if I remember correctly. I'm sorry. The question was, will I...
Just if you were consulting with the tree warden on that?
I absolutely have in the past, and I will continue to in the future. When we go, when I come back to get permission to do this road for the entirety of it, I will have already spoken to the tree warden when I do that, to identify the actual trees that have to come down.
Any other questions from the Board? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have somebody who'd like to speak. I think we'd like to open for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Carl Crossley. I'm current Chair of the Wentworth Watershed Association. I am aware that several of the poles that need to have, that the municipal electric company needs, things need trimming, are near the bridge that was rebuilt several years ago at Pleasant Valley Road. If you remember, when that construction occurred, it was not expected, but it required that several utility poles had to be moved to allow that construction to take place. At that time, the Wentworth Watershed Association gave the town a temporary easement to place those poles on Wentworth Watershed property. The easement expired two years ago. We have had multiple requests to move those poles off the Wentworth Watershed Association property. We do not wish any such trees trimmed on the poles that are on Wentworth Watershed property. They are maintaining the conservation area and the bank. I'm not sure how many poles there are. I'm sure that, I think there's at least a couple. I think this impasse would be solved by moving the poles, which should have been done within the last two years. Funds to do that were in the original budget. I don't have the exact number of written communications that were sent to the town and this Board asking to that be done, but they were done several times in the last several years. Do you have any questions for me?
No, I believe that the section of road that's being addressed tonight is just between Route 28 and Cross Road, so it doesn't come down as far as the bridge, but certainly the comments you made should be taken into consideration when the balance of the road is trimmed.
If that is correct, then my comments are moot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The watershed which this clearing is associated with is to Rust Pond?
No.
No. No, it's...
This particular area goes to Rust Pond, I believe. I believe that's right. The section of road that's under discussion for clearing tonight drains to Rust Pond rather than Wentworth.
Right. It doesn't, it's not going that far down, so you are correct, and my comments are unnecessary.
Well, they don't pertain to what we're discussing tonight, but certainly a point for future discussion.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the Board? All right, I don't believe we need a vote for anything here, so, thank you. And here's your show and tell. Do we need a vote on this? I'm sorry? Do we need a vote on this? Do we?
I think we do.
All right.
That we approve the tree trimming and vegetation management along Pleasant Valley Road, beginning at the intersection of Pleasant Valley and South Main Street and ending at Cross Roads.
Second?
Second. All right. Any further discussion?
And this is basically for the safety of the area.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. All right, Roger's coming back. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearing for Taylor Community Site Plan Review and Site Plan Amendment, 83 Rolling Wood Drive, Tax Map 145-022, Case 2024-16. This is the formal submission and public hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nick Schedule. I'm an engineer with Dubois &amp; King. Also with me is Kirk Bezwick, who's the Facilities Director at Taylor Community, and Jeff Downing from CCI, who is a general contractor for the project. This project is for Sugar Hill, Tax Map 145, Lot 22, 83 Rolling Wood Drive. Just for context, I've got a, showing the tax map and lot location, and then an aerial of the, an aerial of the project area. So this is the entire development, consists of senior housing, assisted living cottages, and will be senior apartment. This aerial photo shows the existing Sugar House, which is the main building on the campus, and then the location for the addition. This is the B Wing, and the B Wing is shown here in this drawing here, and this is the proposed addition. Essentially, the purpose of the project is to renovate the existing B Wing of the Sugar House at Sugar Hill. The existing B Wing consists of 15 assisted living units, which are to be removed and replaced with six independent living apartments. The project includes a small addition, a bump out, to match other portions of the building, which is seven foot by 28 and a half feet, and would be on the back of the B Wing. The proposed project will utilize existing stormwater management controls that have been constructed to accommodate the project. No additional parking is proposed for this project. I did provide a parking calculation that shows the reduction in parking demand based on the... on the elimination of the 15 assisted living units and replacement with the six independent living apartments. The assisted living facility has been designed in compliance with all the zoning requirements for the general residential zoning district, including dimensional controls, setback requirements, height requirements, and coverage requirements. It's a very large lot, approximately 79 acres, so the, I did do a calculation on, you know, the fact that we do have a bumpout, additional rooftop, and some additional walkways that are shown on the drawing to provide emergency egress from the building. Those increases in impervious surface do not have any, it's a negligible increase in the percentage. It doesn't actually equate to any percentage increase other than a .00002 percent, so, or actually technically .02 percent increase. The walkways will be designed as ADA compliant with handrails to provide, as I mentioned, emergency egress from the building. Most of the work is going to be interior as far as change of use. And so I think it's fairly straightforward. The stormwater from these portions of the site will drain to existing stormwater facilities that are on the site. Any other utilities are going to be converted within the building as far as water and sewer. And I don't think there's anything really else to add. If there's questions, we can answer questions.
You've asked for some waivers, and you need to go over those.
Yeah, because this is a site plan amendment and a pretty small component to the overall parcel and what is occurring on the parcel, we've requested some waivers from specifically, let's see if I have... Section 173-15, which is some of the formal application content. These plan items are provided in the original application, in the approved site plan. So due to the nature of the proposed work as a renovation of the existing structure, this information is on file with the town as part of previous site plan approval, so we'd request a waiver to providing that information on the current, the plan that's before you. Or also Article 9A, which talks about streetscaping, buffering, and landscaping standards. The proposed renovation of an existing structure and small addition has no significant impact to the existing landscape standards on the site as a result of the work. There will be some small plantings that are associated with the walkway that's done out front. That area goes through some flower beds that are along the front of the building, and the intent is to essentially replace those flower beds to run alongside that walkway.
Okay, our planner has suggested that really on 173-15, really the waivers are needed for E4, which just talks about things that really you have already submitted, I think, when the project got approved, it seems to me. I mean, it's the area of the entire parcel and acres, location and layout of all the onsite parking and loading, and the type and location of solid waste disposal. I don't think any of these things are being affected by this. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the recommendation from the interim planner goes on to say that with regard to the requested waiver for Article 9A, most of the landscaping, streetscaping, and buffering should have been accomplished during the original construction and should be in place. So they recommend rather than waive that completely, we request that you define the specific elements you feel you cannot accomplish.
In that section?
In Section 9A.
Can I say something to that?
Sure.
Just a second.
I don't think there's anything we can't accomplish, I guess. We would still be, you know, providing typical landscaping around the building that's there now.
So what's the reason for the waiver?
I guess not, you know, the intent was to not have to provide a landscape plan that specifically spells out all of the, you know, plantings that are similar to what's there now.
Right. It seems as if the landscaping of that area has been very nicely taken care of over the years.
I'd rather see it not specified as to what they have to do, because they're putting in new walkways that are ADA compliant, that probably say things have to stay a certain amount of distance away from it, so somebody with a wheelchair can navigate. So we shouldn't say, oh, we've got to put a bush there. I don't think that's right to do.
That's exactly what we're talking about, is not granting.
I presume your concern is not so much in putting in the proper landscape, the concern is having to provide a detailed plan for it.
Correct. I think basically we're trying to save some time and effort and design cost that would be associated with hiring a landscape architect and getting into the specifics and details of what actually would get planted. I think it's probably pretty well demonstrated on the property that they care about the landscaping and do a really good job of maintaining what they have. Now, I did bring a photo that kind of shows where that front walkway is going to be, and just to demonstrate that there is, you know, there is going to be some impact to the existing landscaping just in order to get that walkway to fit in and meet the ADA requirements. But, you know, the intent is still to provide a nice landscaped front area for, you know, for beautification of the building and the project.
I think we could file that under basic maintenance. They've been there a long time now, so things have to happen. Bushes need to come out, new bushes need to go in. These things have to happen. So I don't think we can get all wild about the fact that they had to move one bush to put in the walkway. They do a lovely job up there.
Okay.
I share the planner's aversion to granting a blanket waiver, although when I go through the list under D4, there seems to be many of these pieces that you've already supplied with a prior application, and there's no point in making you go through that hoop again. But I would like, you know, to at least enumerate, and I think we are talking about E4 in terms of what's there. I think there has been a request that there be, that any new lighting be addressed. I think it would be helpful if we had something that simply stated that the existing landscaping as previously approved was in place or was being restored. Like to show pedestrian walks, no signs, no easements. I do have a question on your plans. You seem to show two additional additions on what I believe is the south side of the building that are seven by 28. Maybe on the first floor, maybe something, was something cantilevered? It's on Sheet A11.
I think it's, I think it's these, these are existing, they're existing, I guess, cantilevered areas that have columns at the front. So these are open porch areas that are going to, that are going to be enclosed as part of the architectural work for the project.
It's just, the plan notices them as additions, and when you look at the second floor, you can see it comes out, but there's something you're enclosing.
Yeah, it's enclosing an existing...
And that's what, the 200 square feet?
The 200 square feet is this, this is, this is a true addition where there is no rooftop here. There's, this would be a bumpout addition, seven feet wide and 28 and a half feet long. So this, the idea with this is to kind of architecturally match what's happening in the front with these bumpouts. And part of the renovation work would be to take these bumpouts and enclose that first floor level, which is currently a porch.
Do you happen to have a drawing of that?
It's on Sheet A11.
Oh, I think Kathy's looking for an elevation.
What? Yeah, yeah, right.
Look at A20. That kind of elevation?
I mean, this, this photo shows those areas. So you can see the two columns here, and then I think this one has, actually, there's three columns, 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3. So these areas are, it's a concrete, concrete floor that would get enclosed. And then I think Jeff has a, so it's here. This is where the porch would be enclosed, and this would be the addition.
Yeah.
This is it. Great. Which is this?
Yes, I...
These two windows are enclosed. This area here, maybe you can hold it. This is the cantilevered area that's going to get enclosed right here. So that wall would come down, enclose that, that first floor.
I think she's looking for a front elevation.
Yeah, the front elevation is shown on the package that we received on drawing A2.O. There you go.
Okay. Okay, there it is. Okay, that's, that's fine. That fulfills our requirements, I think.
Yeah, that fulfills the requirement.
I have a question, and it's associated with C1, and it is this thing with a yellow part up in the corner, and it ends up saying, "Approximate location of proposed salt shed." Is that part of this plan?
That was, that was the last time we came to the planning board for an approval on their, the maintenance facility that's there. So it may be that that...
So that is, that is not a change from anything, and not associated with this?
No, that's probably an error on the plan that's based on the fact that I took that portion of it from the last time we came to the planning board.
The point being is that that is irrelevant to this particular discussion.
Correct.
If it was something, then we would need to look at that. But I think, I recall looking at it last time.
Yeah, that's, that's a, can be addressed on the final plans for...
Presumably, the maintenance shed and salt shed have since been built.
They're in, they're in progress of being built, yes. Yep.
Am I correct that this is a cooperative? Is a form of ownership? Is it, it's not a condominium?
No.
But there is some form of individual ownership? I understand that sold one. Am I correct that there's no change, you're not changing the park, and even though you now have more spaces than are required?
Correct.
And stair, the second stairs, one of them goes down into a basement area with storage? And then, on the renovation, and then with the renovation, the second stairs will only serve that end unit?
I think there are two end units that it would serve.
It would serve the first floor and the second floor.
Correct, yeah.
I would suggest that related to the waiver that you want for landscaping, that we just make a condition that landscaping around the new walkways should be similar to existing landscaping. Would that be an appropriate statement?
And not grant the waiver, right, Peter? Not, not grant the waiver.
Not grant the waiver, just make that a condition.
Yep, I think that's agreeable, yeah.
So basically, can I make a motion on the waivers?
I think we need to have a public hearing.
Well, I know, but we have to grant the waivers.
Ah, very good. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll make a motion to grant the waivers for 173-15, E4 only, and the applicant has justified that. The additional waiver that he has requested for the site plan, we do not think that that waiver is needed. And so that's my motion. Just granting the waiver for 175-15, E4.
I'll second that. Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's granted.
And then it seems as if this application is now complete, so I'll make a motion to accept the application as complete.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion amongst the board? All right, would anybody like to make a motion on the approval?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the conversion of these units with the following The conditions need to be met prior to the signing of the plans. The following plans, Plan 1, 2, and 3, all dated November 11, 2024. One condition, and next condition is all of the documents submitted in the application package by the applicant and other information need to be included in this, this application. The architectural renderings have been submitted and approved by the planning, well, approved by the planning board at the public hearing. by the planning board at the public hearing. And then there are some conditions to be met. After the final approval, erosion control shall be properly installed. All lighting in the town of Wolfborough is required to have full cut-off shielding. The active and substantial development for this project is defined as 75% of the work under the building permit being completed. And these improvements must be completed within 24 months of the planning board approval date in order to receive the five-year vesting. For in perpetuity vesting purposes under 674,039, define substantial completion for this project as completion of the project. The snow storage shall be removed and stored such that the drainage structures can function properly, and an ASBIL will be required. Also, there is an appeal process. And that's my motion.
All right, Kathy, I'd like to make one amendment to your motion, if you'll accept it. You stated that these improvements must be completed within 24 months, and I'd like to change that to these improvements must be started within 24 months.
Started, okay, all right, sorry about that. Okay, yes, I accept that.
All right.
Do we want to add the condition that the landscaping be similar to what is existing?
Yes, we could.
All right, would you like to add that to your motion, Kathy? Yes? All right, that landscaping must be similar to existing. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
In this application, it is accepted because it meets all of the requirements of the subdivision, except the ones that we granted a waiver for, and is basically being proposed in order to meet the needs of the Sugar Hill facility.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, the next item on the agenda is Alicia and Hayden Wilbur, subdivision of three lots, 45 Hemlock Drive, tax map 173-027, case 2024-17. This is the formal submission in public hearing.
Good evening, board.
Thank you.
My name's Eric Salavich, land surveyor, north of the survey out of Dover, New Hampshire. Here with me tonight is client Hayden Wilbur.
Could you stay close to the mic?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'll try not to keep doing that. Yeah, so here with me tonight is the landowner Hayden Wilbur. The property is 45 Hemlock Drive, tax map 173, lot 27, here in Wolfborough. This is an existing parcel of land, being 12.22 acres in size, with 493 feet of frontage on Hemlock Drive. The parcel is zoned residential, requiring one acre in size, with 20,000 square feet of contiguous non-wetland area, and 150 feet of frontage for new lots. There are two overlay districts on the parcel, one being manufactured housing, the other being the wetlands conservation district. More on that in a little bit. There is, if you look at note number 13, that is in relation to the delineation of wetlands, which was done by Adam Dorian back in May of 2024. We are showing a 75-foot wetland setback on the plan, which is a setback for very poorly drained soils. The line that is delineated is poorly drained soils in his wetland memorandum, which the board should have a copy of that. He does mention that there are very poorly drained soils within that wetland area. It's a large wetland area, for those that have looked at the survey. So we are showing a 75-foot buffer. We do not feel that a 75-foot buffer does apply to the entire line. We are just showing the most restricted version of that to protect the resource. So, yeah, we're talking about a worst-case scenario in terms of the design and the layout of the subdivision. The lot is not in a flood zone. You can see in note six there, flood map dated 2013. Where was I? We conducted our field survey back in May and June of this year. The proposal, the project proposes a three-lot frontage subdivision, with two lots being over five acres in size, and one lot being nearly two acres in size, almost double the allowed lot size. The lots meet the form factor calculation, which you can see in the lot tag themselves for each of the three parcels. That is a very unique calculation and ordinance. I kind of like it.
And you just made it.
Yeah, we did, we did just make it. It was a fun one, kind of playing with the lines. I've never seen anything like it, subdividing land, but tip the hat, always something new. Where are we at? Test pits were dug on September 11, 2024 by David Clough, a licensed septic designer here in New Hampshire. A copy of that report has been submitted in part of the application. I do have an extra copy, if anybody needs one. Each lot has a 4K area with a proposed building and well with a 75-foot protective radius. Proposed electric utilities will be above ground, per the TRC comment from the power pole up at the corner of the street. That is shown on the plan. That's pole number one, over 43A, over four. There is a proposed access easement for the northeasterly, northwesterly lot. That is 30 feet in width at its widest part. We didn't need a straight swath. We put the access easement in. As you can see, there is some roadside drainage there with the culvert coming across the street. We didn't want to interrupt that. So we're shifting the driveway. That also helps us with some site distance with the sharp corner up at the northwest of the, off the parcel up there. The proposal does include two waivers, which I can go over with, I can go over them now, or we can wait, if there are questions. And there's a few other parts, but I'll take a pause for a minute, digest that information.
Where's the driveway for the easterly, no, westerly, no, yeah, westerly lot?
Yeah, so there's proposed lot 1, 2, and 3. Proposed lot 1, you know, the driveway goes through that access easement out to the road. And these are just preliminary designs. There's no house plans designed. You know, these are just showing that we can fit an ample-size home. You can fit the driveway in. But they're, you know, when these lots are developed, they'll be sold, and the new owners would then come forward with a site plan for development. I'll get into that a little bit with the stormwater management waiver that we have. But, yeah, there is, it's not called out with a tag, but you can see the two thin lines kind of coming off the building, which would be the 12-foot wide driveway. Getting into that, we do have two waivers, one of which is from Section 174-9 Design Standards. This is for the HIS and Soil Survey Order 1 maps. Going through the waiver, the criteria for waiver, there's 1, 2, and 3, which I'm sure the board is aware of. So we wrote our waiver letters in correspondence to that criteria. So number one, labeled as A in our letter, this waiver does not compromise the review of the application because the proposed lots are nearly twice the minimum size in acres with passing test pits for septic systems. There's ample space on all proposed parcels to construct a home with the necessary utilities. Number two, B, adequate and appropriate information has been provided, as we're showing public available soil information for the U.S. Department of Agriculture Natural Resources Conservation Service dated August 22, 2023. In our experience, the HIS soil lines are not drastically different from what is depicted in this publicly available data set. C, number three, this requirement does not conflict with the Wolfborough Ordinance. Chapter 174-9B of the subdivision ordinance references the need for Soil Survey Order 1 maps or High Intensity Soil Survey. Wetlands were delineated by wetland scientists in part of this project, with corresponding soil lines shown per the USDA information referenced in number one, with corresponding and passing test pits, which a copy of that report has been submitted. Lots are ample in size, yada, yada, yada. We move on to our second waiver, which is the waiver for stormwater regulations. That's 174-9 in the Design Standards. You can also see Section 173-21. And A, this waiver does not compromise the review of the application because there is no proposed development on the lots. Our subdivision plan proves that there's ample space in the lot for a house, driveway, septic system, and well. We do not know the end user's plans for development, and there are no plans for development at this time. We do not have house plans, therefore cannot conduct proposed impervious area calculations. We ask that this regulation apply when construction plans are submitted for a building permit. 2B, waiver does not conflict with the intent of the regulations, as we're showing ample-size proposed home, 4,000-square-foot area for proposed leach field, and a proposed well with a 75-foot radius. Any engineering completed at this stage would be preliminary and be subject to change per final ownership. It's an unnecessary cost to the applicant. 3C, this proposed waiver does not deviate from the spirit of the ordinance. Chapter 173, Section 21 of the ordinance references the need for stormwater management plans as part of site plan review to aid in development. With no development planned at this time, this regulation is not applicable to the subdivision plan, or there are no proposed streets or ways. Expanding on that, we have added a note to our survey. I believe it's note number 17, but I'll check. Yeah, we added note 17 after the TRC meeting. It should be on the plans that you guys have. Says, "Prior to development, future landowners will have to comply with the stormwater regulations as referenced in Chapter 173, Section 21." So any future owner will know that they'll have to go through that step.
Okay, I have a question, because in our planner review, he says, "Please see the waiver request." Okay, so consider requiring that, per the stormwater regulations, if the disturbance for each of the driveways and houses are greater than 10,000 square feet, then a stormwater management plan is required. And this must be confirmed prior to the issuance of a building permit. And this needs to be a condition of our approval.
Correct. So I believe the way I understand that from the review letter is that each lot individually, when they propose their home, propose their driveway, if they're proposing 10,000 square feet of impact or impervious impact, they will need a stormwater management plan. So again, that is reiterated in our waivers, that we don't have any proposed building plans, so we don't know the size of the home of the end user. So we don't know that number.
Okay, so it would be up to each individual property owner to determine?
Correct. After the land is developed, each landowner will have to come before the board if their impacts are over 10,000 square feet. So if they're putting a mansion on the lot with a big driveway, and they have over that threshold, they'll have to come before the board. With that, I can go over the planner's review letter and comments. You know, it's a pretty general planning review. Nothing really stood out to me in terms of actions. As we scroll down through this, they talk about the access easement needing to be 30 feet in width, which it is at the entrance of Hemlock Road. I believe it's 31 feet. There's a detail on the left-hand side of the plan that shows that area zoomed in. But this isn't a straight access easement, so it's 30 feet in width by the road, but it's just a triangular corner of the lot. So we feel that we're meeting the ordinance there. You can see at the bottom of page two, the planner review, you know, makes a comment under the protection of natural resources that all work is outside the 30-foot wetlands buffer, which would be the applicable buffer for any work on the construction of these homes. Again, we're just showing a 75-foot buffer to further protect the resource in the planning There's a comment on here about the need for a variance. There is a zoning ordinance that states any new development in this area of town is required to hook up to public water. We have reached out to DPW with the intent to hook up to public water. We received a letter. It should be part of your application package. The water pressure in this area of town does not support additional homes, so it would drop the town PSI below the minimum threshold, I think it's 30 PSI. So we had to go before variance. We went in front of the zoning board yesterday evening, and we were denied. It was a little bit of a shocker. I had some communications with Leanne and the town today. I also had some communications with the attorney representative. I can read his email response for the board that is getting appealed. We would ask that that variance be a condition of approval, so we would still need to get that variance. But in the essence of keeping the project moving, we would like for that to be a condition of approval. And if the board's interested, I can read this email.
Please go ahead.
Sure. So Attorney Brett Allard, Shaughnessy and Allard, out of Manchester, is representing for the project. This is his email response as to why we were received a denial. The primary reason for which the ZBA denied the variance was because some members perceived the project as being too dense. This, of course, doesn't make any sense in the context of a variance requested solely to waive the municipal water connection requirement, where the three proposed lots were fully conforming with the zoning ordinance. Because if municipal water is available, the same project is permitted by right. Seemingly recognizing this, what the ZBA did was to couch concerns about the density of the three house lots under the guise of concerns about three wells. The ZBA essentially used a pretext, the wells, as a basis to deny the variance for reasons that were outside of its purview, conforming density. However, these are completely separate issues. It is the zoning ordinance's minimum lot size requirement that allows for the proposed density, not the availability of municipal water connections. Two of the three members saw right through this and didn't buy it, so the motion to deny barely passed 3-2. The ZBA could not articulate how granting a variance for the wells didn't satisfy the five variance criteria. They just kept conflating that the issues with density, even while maintaining that they were not. In my opinion, the record reflects that the ZBA's decision was unlawful and unreasonable because the true reasoning for the denial was outside the scope of the relief requested. Just like the two dissenting members saw right through this, I believe the judge on appeal will as well. Frankly, I believe the situation rises to the level of unconstitutional government taking and intend to include that in our motion for rehearing to the ZBA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'll make a motion that we table the application until this issue is resolved. We can't entertain something which is pending on a variance, which has not only not been granted, it's been denied. And I think that we just have to wait till there is a resolution, either by appeal or some other format, before we can consider this.
So there was comment at the ZBA hearing that if this proposal was brought before the planning board, and they felt confident that the planning board was accepting of the density and the subdivision itself, that their reaction may be different. And when we started this conversation with the planning department, we were asked to go to the ZBA first, so we went to the ZBA first. And now that we have a denial, and it's right in their video, if you watched the meeting from last night, they said, "I wish this went to planning first."
These should come to the Board of Adjustment first, before they come to us, because that permits the use. And we're being asked to approve something which, until a variance is granted, is not a permitted use.
Oh, may I make a note on that? And the TRC did suggest to the applicant that they needed to go to ZBA first.
May I make a note?
Go ahead, Julie.
We do subdivisions without any of this stuff on, all the time. Simple subdivisions. They have nothing really to do with, "Oh, I want a well later."
Yeah, I understand. And so, Roger, my question, I guess, would be, we're not at this point determining that somebody's going to build a particular house, or get municipal water, or a well. We're only looking at subdivision. Do we need to resolve the well issue before we can- Do we need to resolve the well issue before we can consider the subdivision?
We can't approve unbuildable lots, and if they can't have water, then it's an unbuildable lot.
I don't think you can deny someone access to water.
So these lots load for wells. They fit for wells. Ideally, the applicant would have public water, but we can't have public water. The only reason for the need of a variance is because there is a zoning article that says, if you're in this part of town, you need to hook up to public water. We would prefer to hook up to public water. It's cheaper and easier. We're told by DPW that we cannot hook up to public water. So we create lots that can support a well and a septic and a house. We go for a variance, which in my opinion, and I'm not a land use attorney, so I don't represent zoning board on purpose, is a layup variance because the hardship is, we want public water, you cannot give us public water. That is the hardship. That should have been a five O meeting at zoning, and it's going to get brought up at the next appeal level, from what I can tell and from what the attorney mentions, is that they'll see this all the way to the court.
So Roger, a point was made during last night's discussion. I watched the whole hearing from last night, and one of the points that was made is that at present, if the municipal water department is unable to provide water to a lot that's obligated to connect, there is no mechanism for relief of that. We're trying to find relief of that now through the variance.
Correct.
But back to my point, we're just looking at this as a simple subdivision. We don't really care about who hooks up, who's got a driveway, who's got a house. They've just done all the math to show that it is possible.
Yeah, but Roger's point is that, as he said correctly, we can't approve unbuildable lots. And if you can't get water to it, then you can't build on it.
But we don't know. Just because you watched last night doesn't come into the room with this.
No, we know because we have a letter from the water department saying that they're unable to provide water.
And we are going to solve the variance issue. We would ask that it be a condition. We still have to go back to the zoning board. If that does not get approved, if the appeal does not get approved, we do not meet the conditions, this subdivision does not go through.
So if the only concern with these lots is the availability of water, then if we make a condition of approval, getting the variance from the zoning board, then we don't have, from my perspective at least, we don't have any other reason to withhold the approval of the subdivision.
We simply should not be in the business of approving a subdivision where what it needs to make it go forward has been denied. I realize you've gotten an unusual and unfortunate situation here, but we can't, we can't grant variances. We need to have the variance in hand, whether it's this or any other application, in my view, in order for us to be able to proceed.
The condition could be that they receive a variance. We could grant approval with the condition that they receive a variance, which will send a message to the zoning board that we don't see any problems with this. We're the ordinance board.
Yes, that's correct. We could do that. And that was mentioned during last night's meeting. I think it's unfortunate that the zoning board is concerned about density. One of the things that was mentioned was how many wells would be granted on an individual lot. There was some talk about allowing one or two wells, but not three, because at the moment, it's only one lot. I'm not aware of any existing restriction on how many wells you can have on a single lot, so I don't know why the number of wells came into the discussion.
And now there are wells for geothermal systems, you know, so that's kind of, it's not just for water.
It seems unfortunate to me that this is something that perhaps the zoning board could have resolved last night, but it's causing the applicant now to go to further expense to get it approved. Jane?
I guess I understand where Roger's coming from, but I don't think we should be in the business of requiring somebody to have a water hookup to town water if we can't give them town water. I mean, that's also something we should not be in the business of.
We're not requiring it, the zoning ordinance is requiring it.
Yes, that's true. The planning board isn't requiring it. It's required by the ordinances. It's unfortunate that there's no existing method of relief because of inadequacies of the town water system.
At the end of the day, the zoning ordinance needs to be updated. A simple line that says if the town cannot provide water, a waiver can be granted at the planning board as a special exemption or something like that. That's typically what you see in other municipalities, but it's not in the ordinance within Wolfboro at this time.
I see this as a, a water issue needs to be handled before you issued a permit built really has nothing to do with the subdivision.
That's, and I agree with you. That's my perspective as well.
It does, because you're proving a lot that as it stands is not have, is not buildable.
Well, the lots load for a well, so they would be developed with a well. We can fit a well on the lot. You know, we're not using public water. We can't get public water. We're putting in wells. It's a formality and a piece of paper that we have to go to the zoning board for relief. We're really not getting relief. We would prefer public water. But because we can't have public water, we need a variance, which is the definition of a hardship, which is why this is a unique circumstance, and we would ask for a condition of approval.
It's clearly a hardship.
It's the definition of a hardship. Yeah.
Yeah, and I see in the ZBA application, the basis for the appeal is relief from Article 12, Section 175-83, which is the requirement to connect to town water. It doesn't obligate you necessarily to dig a well or any specific number of wells.
Is there anything in our regulations which says how many wells can be drilled in a particular area?
There's not. I looked into that earlier today.
This whole discussion of whether you can drill a well or not is sort of a moot point, because we can't say, no, you can't drill three wells on there, you can drill two.
We don't have any basis for limiting the number of wells, to the best of my knowledge.
Just think of how many they drilled up at Kings with the geothermal stuff. It was like one every 20 feet. There's like 500 wells up there.
Well, I don't think it's 500, but...
It's hundreds.
Is it?
Yeah. Underneath all the fields. They dug everything up.
There are housing developments with one-acre lots, with each one with their own well. And these are larger lots. So I don't understand what the problem is.
The problem is with the zoning regulations.
Well... I think it would send a clear message if we granted our approval conditioned upon they have to get the variance. So we've sent a message, and we're not granting permission to follow through without that variance.
Right. Do you have any further comments for us before we open the public hearing?
No.
Yeah, I have one question, and that is note, small here, 14, I think. It appears to say that a part, the triangular portion, where his ownership unknown.
Okay, yeah, so that's not related to the access easement. If you look at the bottom left-hand corner of the plan...
Yeah.
Out in the middle of the wetland, there is an approximate eight-foot by 10-foot area.
Oh, okay, I was looking at the triangle.
Yeah, I realize that now. We're using a similar hatch, and that may be confusing. So there is a small parcel of land that dates back to the 60s or the 70s. Some of the original surveys for this area show that little closet, broom closet-sized area as part of this lot. It was then resurveyed, and it was cut off, and the lot was sold. So the current ownership dating back about four owners never received title to that little broom closet. So we're pointing out that there's an issue there out in the middle of the swamp. We've had a conversation with the landowner. He could hire a land use attorney and go for quiet title, and we've, you know, the heirs of Jane P. Hammer, we believe still owns that broom closet. It's going to take lawyers, guns, and money to solve something that is really not important. So that same land issue would then transfer to the new owner of proposed Lot 3. Whoever wants to end up taking care of it, but it is pretty insignificant.
I think that that was a mystery lot that turned up in the 70s when the town was taking land for the sewage treatment plant. There was a former attorney in town who I think owned that, who was not parting with it, and nobody could figure out what he'd buried there.
Interesting. Yeah.
Is it okay, everyone okay with if I make a motion about the waivers?
Sure.
Okay. I'll make a motion to grant the waivers for the existing soil survey and for the stormwater regulations, 174-9G, based on the testimony by the applicant who has justified the granting of the waivers.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion in the board?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of granting the waivers because I think the conditions of approval that appear in the planner review address it, so the waivers are unnecessary. I think if you put in the language, if you put the 20,000 square feet on the plan, that addresses the 174-9, and if you put in the language in the planner review for the stormwater, that addresses it as well, and you don't need the waivers.
I believe we'll still need the waiver for the HISS mapping, because we're showing soils for the USDA NRCS. But I'll follow the board's preview.
Okay, as I read it, which I don't have in front of me, it appeared to me that it gave you kind of an oar in there, that you could, if you showed the 20,000 square feet of non-wetland, that that satisfied, but maybe I could be mistaken.
And we do show that calculation. It's listed as an upwind calculation on your lot tags to satisfy the 20,000 square feet requirement.
The planner suggesting that that be shown on the subdivision plan, the 20,000 square feet.
Okay. Oh, as in like, in the dimensional requirements?
No, on the plan itself, where the 20,000 square feet is on each of the lots.
Okay.
But as long as that's a condition, if you want the HISS mapping...
Yeah, we're seeing HISS mapping. I file a waiver for that on 95% of my subdivisions now. It seems like it's an outdated ordinance, but a lot of municipalities still have it because that was the way we did lot loading in the 80s when all this stuff was getting drafted, so.
Any further discussion from the board? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I'm opposed to the, the stormwater waiver, because I think that's addressed. And I think if you waive it, then he doesn't have to address it.
It would be one of the recommendation, recommended conditions.
And we do have the note on the survey for any future landowner that they'll have to go through stormwater.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to catch up here. Is that, that's the only waiver, is that right?
Well, I think we're...
Yes.
It seems that we have all the information that we need to make a motion to accept this application as complete.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. All right. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak to this? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing and have discussion amongst the board.
I still believe that you should not approve a plan that requires a variance. Once that plan leaves this board, it's basically changed, left the station. We don't know what conditions might be improved by the Board of Adjustment, and we're acting on something that's not permitted.
Final plans will have to be delivered to the board for signature after all conditions are met.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that we approve this project with the condition, in addition to these recommendations for approval, which I don't want to read, that it's conditioned upon the granting of a variance by the zoning board before signature of the plans by the planning board.
Would you like to make that more specific with regard to the variance that they're requesting to reference? And so the variance request was for Article 12, Section 175-83.
I request that we get relief from that particular request from the zoning board as a condition of approval.
So as a condition of approval, the applicant must get relief from the ZBA for Article 12, Section 175-83?
Yes.
And that should be the first condition, right?
That would be the first condition of approval. And then, just to make clear for everybody, Vaughn, I'll read through the planner's recommendations in brief. The following plans, as amended to the date of this approval, are hereby incorporated into the approval. Plan 1 is the existing conditions plan for the property. Plan 2 is the subdivision plan for the property. The next one is per subdivision regulation 174 dot 9 dot 2 dot B dot 1, 20,000 square feet of non-wetland area of sufficient size to adequately accommodate all housing and required utilities as provided. This should be shown on the subdivision plan. The next one is per stormwater regulation 173 dash 21A dot 1. If the disturbance for each of the driveways and houses is greater than 10,000 square feet, then a stormwater management plan is required. This must be confirmed prior to the issuance of a building permit. The next one is that the applicant shall submit a final plan to the Office of Planning and Development for review prior to recording. The next condition is that the final approved and reviewed subdivision plan shall be recorded at the County Registry of Deeds per RSA 676 colon 3, Roman numeral 3, within six months of the approval date. Failure to comply with this requirement shall render the subdivision approval null and void. The next condition is if granted, the applicant shall add a note to the final recorded plan indicated in the approved subdivision regulation waivers. The next condition is that the applicant shall submit a recorded access and easement, I'm sorry, an access and utility easement for the proposed Lot 1 over proposed Lot 2 with the right to construct, maintain, repair, and replace a driveway and/or utilities. The next condition is that the following approvals and any conditions attached thereto are adopted by reference to this approval, and any modification to the approved plans would require a plan amendment from New Hampshire DES subdivision and the Town of Wolfboro Zoning Board of Adjustment. The next condition is that the applicant shall be responsible for the setting of monumentation, the submittal of the certificate of monumentation, and updating the plan sets, including original stamps and signatures from an LLS, CWS, and licensed septic designer. The next condition is that final drawings, each individual sheet and every set of drawings must be stamped and signed by the land surveyor, engineer, or architect responsible for the site plans. The applicant shall submit the following: two sets of 24-inch by 36-inch black line final approved plans, and one set of 11 by 17 final approved plan drawings, and one electronic version in PDF format. The next condition is that the applicant shall be responsible for the payment of all recording fees. The next condition is that all documentation submitted in the application package by the applicant and any requirements imposed by other agencies are part of this approval unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner, or superseded in full or in part. The last condition is that appeals language pursuant to RSA 677 colon 15... The last condition is that appeals language pursuant to RSA 677 colon 15, any persons aggrieved by any decision of the planning board may appeal the decision to the Carroll County Superior Court within 30 days after the date upon which the board voted to approve or disapprove the application, or to the ZBA pursuant to RSA 676 colon 5, Roman numeral 3, within 30 days following the date the board made its decision. End.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that's been, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed.
Okay, and the findings of fact are that the, this application meets all of the requirements of the zoning regulations except for the water hookup requirement, which needs a ZBA variance before this application can proceed.
All right. Thank you.
Have a good night.
The next item on the agenda is, part of our work session, is Article 24 Conservation Subdivision. All right, we've received in your packets the updated conservation subdivision. Vaughn, I believe you sent me an email a couple of days ago.
It's not about this.
Ah.
Do you want me to address that or wait till the end?
Your choice. It's a related topic.
Well, so it, my comments were relative to the fact that the shoreland regulation, zoning regulations that we adopted, the town voted on and were adopted in March of 2024 are not in the zoning that's evident on the town website and is not what is being used by the town planning department right now.
Yes, I looked that up too, and I could not find any reference on the website.
You mean reference to the updated one?
The updated one.
And the current planning planner, interim planner, is using the old regulation and the old application checklist.
All right, so it's my mistake. So that's shoreland rather than conservation, so perhaps we should leave this to the end.
Okay, well, it'll be the same statement later.
Yeah.
At some point, either Tavis sent that out, or it's in the amendment section.
All right, thank you, Leanne. We'll address that at the end. Thank you. So, any further discussion on the conservation subdivision? Are we happy with the way it looks now?
I think we should review Laura Spector-Morgan's comments, and I would be in favor of incorporating at least most, if not all, of them.
So we just, so we scratched the first sentence of 175.150, which is the development of land under this article?
I think under A, my suggestion would be that we say the proposal shall be reviewed by the planning board, and then we cross out everything down till we get to under the procedures and requirements of the subdivision regulations as amended, which gets rid of what I think are the offending words.
To start the cross-out after the first mention of planning board in 175.150A?
Yep, and then you get down, so it reads, "The proposal shall be reviewed by the planning board under the procedures and requirements of the subdivision regulations as amended," which I believe gets rid of the words that.
So the last words that to be deleted are "in addition development proposals"?
Shall be reviewed, I believe.
Yeah, the proposal shall be reviewed by the planning board under the procedures and requirements of the subdivision regulations.
Okay, got it. So it's, we're deleting down to the middle of the third line?
Yep, starting with "to meet" down through "be reviewed."
All right, so the proper reading would be, "The proposal shall be reviewed by the planning board under the procedures and requirements of the subdivision regulations as amended."
Yep.
Good.
And then if you want, under C, I think she's absolutely right. There are references in here to the conceptual preliminary plan and approving of it, and we don't approve them, and I think part of the conceptual plan language is leftover from the prior, or the unamended version, when there were conceptual reviews. So I would suggest at the end of the first line, delete starting with the, and delete down through, and the final plan, so it reads, "As evidenced by the natural resource inventory maps, the parcel incorporated in this design option shall..."
Okay.
Get rid of "as amended"?
I keep in the "as amended." And then on 175.151F, right now I made some of them lot size. We don't necessarily need a lot. Do we want to change it to read minimum lot or site size? The minimum area for residential lots or dwelling sites shall be flexible? Anybody else? I think she makes a good point.
All right, so we're going to change the first three words to minimum lot slash site size?
Yeah, minimum lot or site size.
Minimum lot or site size?
Yep.
Okay.
And then the minimum, and then you delete lot area for residential lots or dwelling sites.
Okay, so we're putting lot, it's in the beginning of the second line, right?
Are you on 175?
That's 175.151F.
Yeah, we don't have minimum lots. And then it's site size, but then the next.
Okay, the minimum, delete lot area, and then the minimum area for residential lots or dwelling sites. And then at the top of the page.
The top of the next page, so you're 151G?
Yeah, one. Yeah, she suggested replacing platted with approved, which, platted floats around, but approved is certainly fine.
Plated means drawn. We're not drawing anything.
Yes, which is Roger's point. It'll be much clearer to everybody. All right, next is 151I1?
Yeah, I think her language is much clearer.
All right, so that's going to be written to where 60% or more of the total parcel is dedicated to conservation land, the planning board may authorize a maximum of a 5% density bonus.
Yep. And then are you ready for J2?
Yeah, 151J2.
And I would agree, I think we should add "on the plan and on the property."
So just adding "and on the property" is appended to the end of the sentence?
How are you going to mark it on the property?
Yes.
No, no, I, to these questions, how do we mark it on the property? Do we need to define that here?
You just flag it. Then they mark wetlands.
Just flag it for construction use? Is that what, just flag for whether doing the construction, or do you want it monumented?
I don't think it's up to us to determine means and methods. However, the applicant wants to show it to us, whether we'd suggest that they're something different or accept what they're presenting to us is how they want to mark it.
As long as it's clearly designated.
Yeah, I agree with Steve. As long as it's clearly designated, I don't think it matters how it's done.
Flags or stakes or whatever.
So not just, not just on the plan, and you really want it out there on the ground?
Correct.
So who's going to go look at it? Is it for the code officer to look at it? Is it for the construction guys to look at?
Well, that's a good point. We know this is.
I can go out there and just jam a stick in the ground.
Right, and then how long does that stick have to stay there?
Well, it's not just a stick, it's a whole line that goes all around the property.
Well, it's, but after the property has been developed, at least in theory, it's a virtual line. We don't expect the stakes or lines or whatever to be physically present on the property after it's been developed.
But let's picture a 300-acre parcel with an irregular boundary. Now we have a 100-foot buffer all around that that needs marked somehow.
But it doesn't say marked for what?
I guess the question is, are those markings physically on the ground intended to remain there in perpetuity?
I don't see why. I think once the project's completed, it wouldn't matter after that.
You would hope.
So you would be in favor of putting this marking all around the 300 acres?
I wouldn't expect it to be there permanently. Certainly, you may need it to be there during construction, but not permanently.
So like a snow fence? You know, that's how you.
Yeah, but this doesn't tell you that you can take it up. It says you've got to put it in.
Right.
Well, no, I think the point is if it's left as it's currently written, that it only needs to be designated on the plan, do we need, should we follow Laura's recommendation to have it marked on the property? And I think that that perhaps would be unnecessary. I wouldn't certainly want a permanent snow fence running around my property.
And we put during construction?
Yeah.
And marked on the property during construction?
When they go out and flag the beginning stuff when they're doing test pits and stuff, how long do those little flags have to stay in for? Anybody know?
I don't know.
No, that's for, when they put them, they locate them on the plan, flag it and locate it on the plan.
And then they go out and take the flag off?
Once it's on the plan.
Nobody cares. It's done its job, its job.
Yeah, so I would think that we don't need the buffer marked on the property.
Yeah. Because once they locate it, they put it on the plan, and then it's done.
Mm-hmm.
So are we not changing it, or are we changing it?
Just leave it.
Yeah, just leave it the way that is.
We have conservation land all over Harriman Hill, and the development defines the beginning of that conservation area.
Very clear.
Yeah, right.
So there's no additional markings needed?
No.
Yeah, I mean, my conservation easement has been surveyed and has the trees blazed.
Well, I would suggest that we leave it as it's currently written.
Yeah.
Let's go on to 151K3. And this is the same issue with the conceptual.
Do we just delete conceptual plan?
Yeah, it should read instead prerequisite to approval of the detailed final plan. All right, the next is 151K5. And this is making reference to the master plan, which is not a regulatory document.
I think that that was something that originally referred to, since the inception of this conservation subdivision, referred to some plans which no longer existed. And then we updated it to the natural resource maps, maybe?
Yeah, I certainly don't have that history, Roger. You would know better than I.
I think we changed it, because I asked Tavis, I believe, that whether we had whatever map was referenced, and he said no. And I think this is what came as a result.
We just take out the Wolfboro, our master plan, natural resources, and say laid out to ensure that they're interconnected.
Yeah, Kathy's suggestion is to rewrite this to read, "Conservation land shall be laid out in general accordance to," I'm sorry, "conservation land shall be laid out to ensure that an internet-connected network of open space will be provided."
Yep.
So it takes out the reference to the Wolfboro master plan.
Sounds good.
All right.
I don't think you can, I don't think you can say it has to be, though, because it's not always going to work.
The master plan's.
It says to ensure that.
No, not the master plan, but that they have to hook up.
So instead of conservation land shall be laid out, perhaps we should write conservation land should be laid out.
Should. When it all possible, you know, try to.
And one of the resources you use to demonstrate that would be the natural resource inventory.
So do you want to add a sentence that say?
No. It would just be one way that you're doing it.
Okay, okay.
Basically just saying, try, try to do it.
Mm-hmm. All right, any other comments for this?
Seems like we've been working on this for two years.
Yes.
We're almost done.
All right. So I believe the next step would be a public hearing, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and we've already made that motion. Do we need another motion?
Yeah, I think we should make a motion to put forth this for a public hearing on December 17th.
I believe we've done that already.
We already have that.
What we put forward then is the prior version of this. We did not.
Oh, the amended version.
Yeah. Put this forward as amended.
Roger, you making that motion?
I am.
Okay, and Kathy seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is conditional use permit criteria. So you should have a redline version from your packet. And there's a bunch of redlines and additions.
And all we're doing is making this so that it applies to more than just the AD who. I mean, that's really what we've done, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So just so everybody can hear, this is to make sure that the conditional use permit criteria apply to more than just accessory dwelling units as it has in the past. And then I think I'll just read it out, since it's not very long. 175 dash 215, Review of Conditions for Grant of Permit. The planning board may... The planning board may, in appropriate cases and subject to the following criteria, grant permits for the conditional, conditional uses set forth in this ordinance. Before reaching a decision under this article, the majority of the board shall have viewed jointly the subject area. Said viewing shall be noted in its records. The board shall also notify a butters in accordance with the New Hampshire RSA 676:7. The board shall also notify a butters in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 676:4. The board, in acting on the application for a conditional use permit, shall take into consideration the following criteria. A, site suitability, that the specific site is appropriate for the proposed use. This includes, 1, usable, adequate usable space, 2, adequate access, 3, absence of environmental constraints, examples given flood plain, steep slope, et cetera. B, immediate neighborhood impact. The, in the case of accessory dwelling unit, the proposal maintains the aesthetic continuity for the primary dwelling unit as a single-family dwelling, and the accessory dwelling unit entry door is not visible from the street. And lastly, C, that there will be no undue nuisance or serious hazard to pedestrian or vehicular traffic, including the location and design of accessways and off-street parking.
In the first paragraph, I, what I tried to do was to change 676.7 to 676.4. 676 refers to Board of Adjustment Hearings, and 676.4 is the planning board. So either, it's in there twice, basically.
All right, so what we'd like to do then is omit the sentence that reads, "The board shall also notify a butters in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 676.7," and leave 676.4.
Yeah, or you can just cross out 676.7 and put 676.4, and then you're changing less.
Thank you, Roger. And thank you for the work in putting this together. Any other comments on Article 31? All right?
So we need a motion to move this to public hearing on December 17th?
Won't be public, not enough notice, time for notice.
Right. We won't, we won't be able to meet the public notice requirements until December 17th.
What's the earliest we could schedule it?
January...
January 7th.
All right, so we would move this to public hearing, January 7th. Does that give us enough time for two public hearings? Take your time.
Actually, I get it in on Thursday. I can get, we can do it on the 17th.
We can do it on the 17th? Okay, Kathy?
Can do it on the 17th. Okay, so that was my motion.
So, could you restate your motion, please?
To move the conditional use permit criteria to public hearing on December 17th.
Very good. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Lastly, is discussion on short-term rentals.
When I revised this, I took the discussion at the last meeting and based on what I was instructed to do. I know we've got, we got a memo from Vaughn. I also got a note from Kathy relating to whether we want to allow this in all zoning districts or in just the residential districts. If we limited it to the residential districts, that would mean it would be prohibited in the business districts. It could only be permitted in those districts where we allowed short-term rentals.
Does anybody have any further comment?
Okay, so Roger, what you're saying is that if we allow it in just the residential districts, and the short-term rental prohibition would still carry over for the business district? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying if it would, it would, they would be prohibited in the, in the non-residential districts.
Okay, so we should include all the districts?
Well, the way it's currently written, it applies to all zoning districts. Roger's comment is that there was some discussion about prohibiting it in other, and districts other than residential.
Okay, well, we hadn't really discussed it tonight.
Aren't residents, aren't houses allowed in every district?
Yes, but this is short-term rentals.
But there are many, many districts that have a lot of houses in them. Why, you know, think about the, what is it, the Back Bay District, Wolfboro Falls District? Those are commercial districts, but they have a lot of houses. Why would we prohibit something that we allow in other residential areas in those zones?
I was just picking up on your, the memo you sent that had in...
Said that it should be allowed in all districts.
Yeah, it's, um, I'm not offering an opinion, I just did what I was asked to do.
So I didn't ask for what you think I asked for, I asked for all districts. It should be allowed in all districts.
And that's what it says?
Yeah.
It does say all.
Yeah, we're just discussing whether what's written is the way we want to move forward. And it sounds to me as if there isn't any support for limiting it to only residential All right, so there are several different proposed ordinances here. They're, of course, not numbered yet because they have not been approved. The first one, though, is for short-term, under short-term rentals would be purpose. The purpose of this article is to regulate short-term rentals for the benefit of homeowners and the visitors to our community, to promote health and safety, to minimize neighborhood disruption, and to promote the general welfare of the community. The next section is applicability of other regulations. Where specific development requirements are addressed in this article, they shall supersede any other town regulation. Where specific development requirements are not addressed in this article, the most stringent of any other town regulations shall apply. The next section is zoning districts in which permitted, as we've just discussed. It currently reads, "Short-term rentals shall be permitted by conditional use permit in all zoning districts." The next section is criteria for approval. Where permitted by conditional use permit, a short-term rental shall comply with the following. A, as part of the approval process, the dwelling unit must pass an inspection by the Wolfboro Fire and Rescue Department and by the code enforcement officer, which shall be limited to the following. 1, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors shall meet current New Hampshire State Fire Code and New Hampshire State Building Code requirements. 2, all doors and windows designed to provide emergency egress must be in compliance with applicable codes. 3, no basement space shall be used as a sleeping area unless there are two means of egress with properties, properly sized windows or doors conforming to the New Hampshire State Fire Code and New Hampshire State Building Code. 4, a functioning fire extinguisher shall be visibly installed in any kitchen area. B, the maximum number of occupants shall be two per bedroom plus two additional occupants. The number of bedrooms to be determined based on the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services approved septic design or the Town of Wolfboro assessing department records, whichever is fewer. C, any subsurface sewage disposal system serving the property shall be properly functioning and shall have a New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services approval for the number of bedrooms. For systems without such an approval, an evaluation by a New Hampshire Septic System Evaluator must be performed. And a current New Hampshire DES approval obtained for a system to be installed in the event of system failure. D, the property must be in compliance with the current parking requirements of Article 22 of this ordinance. All parking shall be onsite or in designated parking areas. E, the property owner shall submit proof of current New Hampshire Roman meals tax license identification number. F, the property owner or designated property manager shall provide contact information and shall be available to address any issues arising during rental periods. G, approval of a short-term rental shall be valid for two years from the date of approval and must be renewed every two years. Renewal shall require a reinspection as set forth in Section 175, blank above. Application for conditional use permit shall not be required unless there has been a change in the dwelling unit or property on which it is located. Approval is property owner-specific, and any change in ownership shall require a new application. H, approvals may be revoked for failure to comply with this article or with any condition of approval. The first violation of any requirement shall result in a warning, the second in a fine of not more than $100 for each day of the violation, and a third in a revocation of approval. If revocation occurs, the property owner may not apply for reinstatement for a period of one year. That's the end. I guess my only concern looking at this is where it reads, "Application for a conditional use permit should not be required unless there has been a change in the dwelling unit or the property on which it's located." And I think we should define what type of changes apply. You know, if somebody rearranges the furniture, we're certainly not going to require it.
You can put in substantial, but that's in the eye of the beholder.
Yes.
And the, the issue isn't, isn't the issue sort of associated with the number of bedrooms claimed?
Yeah.
I don't read the number of bedrooms in here. I, I read any change. And I would almost presume it meant something that would require a building permit. Would be a change.
Yeah.
So has been a change requiring a building permit?
That would be fine.
Yeah.
And what, what about the next part? About a change in the dwelling unit needing a permit or the property on which it's located? I don't get that. Like, we're changing the driveway entrance or something? What, what do you mean by the property?
There may be instances where you have more than one dwelling unit on a property.
Right, but what, what change in the property itself?
So if you have two dwelling units...
Causes to be inspected.
I'm, I'm not sure how this will work out, but if you have two dwelling units and you have the short-term rental in your accessory dwelling unit, and you make a change to the primary dwelling unit, would that then precipitate reapplying?
Or if you put up a garage that was where you're supposed to be parking?
I, I read property as the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah, I was just giving the example, but Roger has another example where if you make a change to the driveway, which affects parking.
How about if we both requiring a permit? So it's a change in the dwelling or the property on which it is located requiring a building permit?
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
That's better. If you wanted to move your garden in the front that, you know, that wouldn't cover it.
Yes.
Requiring a permit.
Well, you don't require a building permit if you change parking.
No, but if you put a garage up that obliterates your parking, that does.
I have a question.
So that would trigger it, so it'd have to be re-inspected?
It would, it would require a conditional use permit.
No, I'm saying if you, you just said there, you wanted to put in something and it didn't affect the building that the unit is in, so garage, putting in a garage. But the fact that you put in the garage and pulled a permit would trigger it so that it would have to re-inspect.
That's right.
You would need, you'd need, well, every two years you have to re-inspect, but if you put it, permit, pulled a permit for a garage, you would need a new conditional
I don't really like any of this, but I think we're getting the words right.
Okay.
So we were just going to add the required a building permit at the end of the red sentence with the period.
That's right.
That would be fine. I have a question in D. It says, "The property must be in compliance with the current parking regulations of Article 22 of this ordinance."
Two parking spaces?
But the, what is the antecedent to the article of this ordinance? Or is it the entire ordinances of the Town of Wolfboro?
Article 22 is the off-street parking regulations.
At the same time, it doesn't seem to tell me where that is in this particular statement. So I may just be dumb, but I, you know, it's one of these things where it might be, that it would be...
So I guess to address what your concern is, Peter, it should read, "The, the property must be in compliance with the current parking requirements of Article 22 of the Wolfboro Off-Street Parking Ordinance?"
Can't just use the number.
The Roman numerals are used elsewhere, but that's fine. The easier it is to find, the better chance you have of somebody...
And to say it's part of the off-street parking tells them where to start looking.
So if we're done with that, I have a, still have a problem with the criteria for approval on the first page. One, two, three, let's say it's the fourth item, 175, four. I think that, limited to the following, enlisting a couple of pieces of building codes and fire codes is not good. I think we should scratch all of the individual notations here and just say, they have to follow all building, fire, and life safety codes, period. Not pick out specific...
Well, I think they have to follow all the codes. The four things listed here is only limiting the inspection for the approval of the permit.
Yeah, I used, I, I considered that, and I used, kept this language for two reasons. The first was, this is what most of the other ordinances seem to do, and these were pretty consistent. They listed specific things. The second reason was that if you tell people, "These are the four things they have to do," they're going to know what you're talking about. If you tell them they have to abide with the New Hampshire State Fire Code and the New Hampshire State Building Code requirements, they're probably going to have no idea.
Correct.
And they have to abide by those codes regardless.
And, I mean, this gives you specific things you've got to address, and it's really clear.
So it's a list for the inspector, period?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's a list to tell the property owner, "This is what you need to have in order to get approved."
But if the inspector sees something else, it now says he was limited to only these four things.
Right. Maybe it should not say limited to.
That's what the inspection is limited to, and I took that out of another ordinance. I made one of the comments, I would say if, that's what your inspection for a short-term rental is, if somebody goes in there and finds that you've got a, that you're running a cafe in your basement, then I don't think they could, they necessarily need to not see that, but this is what you need to do to get a conditional use permit.
How about instead of be limited to, include the following?
But not limited to?
Yeah.
Because I, I can see, because you've said both the fire department and the code officer's going to go. I could see one of the fire department dudes going down there with all of his stuff and, you know, looking along the way, and he might find something else that really needs attention that just doesn't happen to be where he's supposed to be looking.
Well, I, I'm not certain that he would be precluded from addressing that, but he would have to address it outside of this approval process.
But since he wasn't supposed to look, is he allowed? See where I'm going with that?
I, I understand what you're saying. I, I don't know what the legalities of it would be.
So what, what's the problem with scratching limited to and just putting include?
Yeah, I mean...
I, I don't see a problem with that.
You could go into a house and find that there are raccoons in there. I mean, if, if it hasn't been occupied for a while. You know, I mean, you could find a rodent infestation.
This is just telling the fire department what they're going to... This is just telling the fire department what they're gonna do, and they're not gonna like that.
No, I understand. I, I, I think that Vaughn's suggestion is good, that if we remove be limited to and substitute include, it removes the limitation, but it still accomplishes Roger's suggestion of listing the four things that should be focused on.
Yeah.
But if we worded it after the word shall, put include, comma, but not be limited to the following?
Yeah.
Shall include, but not limited to the following, and then list, keep those four listed there?
Yes.
Would that do it?
I like that change.
Well, I think that...
Because I mean, this may be fine for this year.
I think you're gonna get a negative reaction to that. I think this way it gives them the option, but if we say, "We're gonna go in and inspect your house and everything in it," there may be opposition.
I also see that this is good for right now, but in three years, we don't want this to be outdated because there's a number five that they've gotta put in here? Has code changed? You know, it needs to be a little bit flexible?
Yeah, I agree it should be, there should be some flexibility, but I, I also am concerned that if you put in not limited to and then the inspection is open to everything, it's gonna meet a lot of resistance. So, while we want to put in some regulation, we also want something that's gonna be accepted by the voters.
And it's, okay, back up one step. Part of the approval process, the dwelling unit must pass inspection. Is that the entire house? Is that the entire mansion, or is that just the rental portion?
I think it's gotta be the entire dwelling unit. You know, so for example, if somebody is renting a room in their house, you still wanna have proper fire protection. They still have to have egress.
And they're gonna have to wander around, the whole house. They can't just do the L out there that you might rent a little bit, because...
Mm-hmm, that's right.
So, they're gonna be wandering around.
They have to go to any area that would be accessible to the renter.
Or any area required to meet the codes. For instance, a stairway.
Yeah, even if it's not accessible to the renter. That's right.
Well, it might have to be if it's egress.
Yes.
So, another point is sometimes we say current New Hampshire codes, and sometimes we just say New Hampshire codes. Are we gonna leave current in there or take it out?
I don't think it's necessary to say current. I think that's implied.
So, we should take it out of the smoke and carbon monoxide?
I will say that this part A ends up being something which I think will in fact help the voters to understand what we're doing because we're talking about basic safety. And I don't think there's anything in here which people will say, "Oh, no, you shouldn't have."
Right.
You know, "Oh, no, we, we shouldn't have a fire extinguisher in the kitchen." It's like, no, no. These are things which I think the voters can see as something which is needed for these particular businesses or these particular, what, dwellings.
I guess one other change I would suggest is in 170, the criteria for approval, A3, reads, "No basement space shall be used as a sleeping area unless there are two means of egress with property size windows or doors." I think we can take out the word basement. No space shall be used.
Ooh, smart idea.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter where it's located, whether it's above grade or below grade.
No back closet. Yeah, good idea.
Just, just no ba, take out the word basement.
Because windows are, are, can be used for egress, there's only one stair to the upstairs.
Do we have to say in each one of these things, "According to New Hampshire State Fire Code, blah, blah, blah"? Are we trying to make this easier for people to read, so just make these the bullet points? Because A is saying that we're going to go by the, it should be up there. Let's pass inspection by these guys, which should not be limited to the following according to state fire and building code somehow. So, we don't have to say that in each one of one and two and three and four. Does that make sense?
Well, I prefer what's here.
Then can we make them all match, then?
What do you mean by make them all match?
Well, two doesn't say.
One, one says at the end, "State Fire Code, blah, blah, blah." Number two does not.
I'm not sure that the state codes say you need a fire extinguisher in the kitchen. I think it says you may need a fire extinguisher someplace. I'm not sure it's in the kitchen, but I'm no authority on the building codes.
I don't know that it's in the code at all, residential code, that you need a fire extinguisher in the kitchen.
It's the insurance companies that want you to do that.
Yeah.
Well, I think that if you don't specify it in the kitchen area, then people may install it in some out of not easily accessible location. Typically, the kitchen is readily accessible, and certainly that's a probab, well, I'm guessing that's where fires are most likely to, to occur.
Did this portion get run by anybody, its fire department, yet?
Not yet, but certainly we should have both code enforcement and fire department take a look at it, since we're asking them to do something.
Yeah, because they, they may have a different idea since they deal with it every day.
Mm-hmm.
So, the other thing that we haven't addressed is if you, if you come up with a list of things that are not compliant, they fail the test, what is the recourse? What do they do? They have to, and we should...
Correct.
Yeah, that should probably be written somewhere. Any deficiency should be corrected in order to, you know, receive...
Or could that just be...
It says to approve it, they have to meet these requirements.
Yeah, so I think it's...
It's implied.
I don't think you need to specifically say, "Correct the deficiencies." They're not gonna get their approval until those deficiencies are corrected.
I, I would hope that while they were going through the house with whoever's doing the inspection, that the guy would go, "Oh, this is out of a, you know..."
Yeah.
And tell them, "You don't have a smoke detector here. You don't have a smoke detector there." You know, I, I don't, I don't think it needs to be more than that, just, you're not gonna pass.
I, I agree.
And this is why, while we're standing right here so you can see, and if you fix all that stuff, you can reapply.
Yeah, in my experience, both our code enforcement and fire department are pretty communicative with the population. I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I don't think it needs to be explicit in the regulation here.
Okay, so we, we now want the code officer and the fire department to...
To weigh in. That's right.
And then come back to us.
Correct.
We're running out of time, I think. Are we running out of time?
We are running out of time.
I, I mean, I agree that we could have the code officer and fire department look at this.
I would send it to him as an informational...
Yes, I agree, which we can, if we agree on the, the text here, then that can be sent out to them tomorrow, perhaps.
There, there is one snafu here on this, is if we don't pass the definition to short-term rental, we can't have this...
That's correct.
Was that not on what I sent you? We have a definition.
And it's set for a public hearing.
Right.
Okay.
That's already taken care of.
It's gonna happen on the 17th.
Right.
But that has to pass first, and then this can follow along behind it, so...
That's right.
Make sure this number comes after the other one, the articles.
Yes.
I have, I have one other thing, and that is on C at the bottom of the page, I believe was Peter suggested including the words, "For properties not served by Town Sewer and a subsurface sewage disposal system shall." And I don't know whether I left that out or...
All right.
Or I'm saying to you, or...
For any property...
I think it's obvious, but Peter, I believe, suggested we include that, and I see it's crossed out. I don't know whether that was me or...
Well, it's...
Well, actually, even if it is served by Town Sewer, the town has a certain number of bedrooms that they've permitted and we've paid for.
Yeah.
So, if you don't have that same number of bedrooms, you need to pay the town for more bedrooms.
Well, so, isn't Town Sewer still technically a subsurface sewage disposal system?
Yeah.
So, we don't need to say not served by Town Sewer, whether it's Town Sewer or private, it's still subsurface.
I'm not sure it's subsurface. It's, it's in pools.
It's not subsurface.
No?
It's not subsurface, because it goes to a treatment plant, goes up to an RIB or gets sprayed out in the spray field, so...
Oh, okay.
Wouldn't technically be a subsurface. Subsurface refers to an individual...
How about just any sewage disposal system?
System on, on one lot.
All right, so we can reinstitute the four properties not served by Town Sewer?
Yeah, include the, the four properties not served by Town Sewer, then any subsurface sewage disposal system shall?
Yeah.
That doesn't work for what's on Town Sewer, because they're not...
Unstrike it.
Correct, unstrike it. All right. Any other comments?
Can I ask, can I ask a dumb question? Is this still for any new short-term rentals going forward?
Yes.
That's, that's correct. It would not apply to currently existing short-term rentals. All right.
Well, when this is amended, is, can we still do this on the 17th?
Well, I think we're allowed to do minor amendments, but this is substantial.
It doesn't matter.
So, it needs to be moved to...
Just a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Just needs to be moved to public hearing, right? Once we've finalized it, but we're, I, I presume we're not gonna finalize it until we get some feedback.
It needs to come back to the...
Come back to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need, we need at least one more meeting.
Okay. All right, and that would be on the 17th.
No, no, what I'm saying is if, if we get comment from the code enforcement officer on the fire department, then would it come back to us on the 17th? But that wouldn't be the public hearing, because we'd wanna finalize any potential changes that they might implement.
Okay, then the next public hearing would be...
So, the last day to hold the first public hearing on zoning amendments is January, would be Jan, would be at the January 7th meeting.
Yeah, so we, we still have the time to do that. It's right down to the wire.
The last day to hold it is January 13th, but that doesn't fall within our scheduled meeting. So, for the planning board, it would be January 7th.
But we can still go ahead and have a public hearing on the 17th.
Well, we, we could certainly...
Having input from...
Yeah, we could certainly have a public hearing on the 17th, but we don't have a final version of the proposed ordinance.
Yes, we couldn't notice it legally, properly.
Why not?
I would...
As we say, and the future thing we're working on, we might bring up that night.
I mean, we're talking about getting public input.
I don't wanna mess around with this. We need to do it the right way.
Yeah, we gotta be careful and do it by the book. So, I, I would say that we get input from fire department and code enforcement. Look at it again on the 17th. I'm sorry, look at it again.
No, I, I would recommend sending this out to code enforcement and the fire department.
Right.
Have a response prior to the 17th.
Yeah.
Have the board review.
On the 17th.
On the 17th.
And then move it up for public.
No, I would move to public hearing for January 7th tonight, so that I can properly notice it in the paper.
Okay.
True.
Which I think is what Roger was mentioning.
Now, I'd be in favor of holding the public hearing.
Okay, so you want a motion to set the public hearing for January 7th?
Yeah, that's not what Roger wants, but that's...
I, I would like to see a public hearing on the 17th, because we talked about giving the public another opportunity for input, and if we wait till the 7th of January, they can say whatever they want, and we can't change anything.
Oh, okay.
If we held the public hearing on the 17th, and we have the fire department, we have another opportunity to make changes, either because of the fire department, the codes officer, or the public, otherwise this, January 7th, it's...
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Roger at this point.
Yeah, okay, that's a good point.
And we could hold a public forum on the 17th as well.
But a public hearing can be the public forum.
And does this also have to go to the, our town attorney?
It should.
Yes. But do you wanna have her review something that's not final?
No, certainly not. So, I, I would, Kathy, you wanna make a new motion?
One more question for you.
For the 17th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before you ask that, before you ask that, you just said, "Public forum." He says, "Public..."
Hearing.
Hearing.
There are two different things.
If they're two different things.
Right.
So, if we make changes to the document before we say, "Okay, now it's a forum on the same night," is that gonna work?
No, we're gonna...
Or does it, or can it be a hearing?
We're gonna take it to a public hearing. If there are changes that people suggest, then we can continue it on the 7th.
So, the hearing, we can have changes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We can make changes after the December 17th public hearing, which would then be subject to a public hearing on January 7th, is it? I mean...
And we won't be able to have a second public hearing that soon. The problem is we have to have 14 days between the two public hearings. That's why I was suggesting a public forum for the 17th, to allow the public to speak, and then we wouldn't get into that issue.
Can you continue a public hearing from the 17th to the 7th legally?
Yeah, but you have to have what you're...
I know, you have to have 14 days between the two public hearings. I, I mean, another option is to schedule an additional meeting so that we can meet...
Well, we could also do the first public hearing on December 17th and the second public hearing at the second January meeting.
Yeah, so the second Jan, second January meeting is the 21st. And that, we would be able to do that. The last day for the planning board to hold their final public hearing is January 27th, and our second...
Okay, so we've got some flexibility. I thought we just...
That would allow the 14 days.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Okay.
One more time.
Are we gonna do it the 17th?
Do, do we run into a problem because of the deadline for, do we run into a problem because of the deadline for the deliberative session? And things going to the printer? That seems to wag the dog on some of this.
No, we run in, no, it's the, if you hold, we can't hold a public hearing on December 17th and then hold a public hearing on January 7th. We need, because there has to be, I believe there's not enough time. There needs to be a solid 14 days between two, two. There is 14 days, but the, but then you need 12 days. Hold on. I don't know.
So, is there any reason having the public hearing on the 17th and then a second on the 21st?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to look into, because I know you have to have 14 days in between and the public notice, I mean...
Well, so, December 17th to 24th.
I can look into the RSAs and just make...
All right.
Because right now, no...
Quick, before I make a decision.
Okay, make a, make a motion to hold the public hearing for the short-term rentals on December 17th.
I'll second that motion.
And send this to the town attorney and to the fire department and code officer.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Last, second to last item on the agenda is approval of minutes. The first is for...
Should we, should we have the public talk before we do the minutes?
Oh, sure. I, you know, these people are, I think they're wanting to talk and...
Thought they brought a pillow.
All right, any public comment for all you patient observers?
Had you on the edge of your chair the entire evening? You guys are doing the work, but it's exhausting watching.
So, thanks for all the hard work. Come a long way.
You are.
Never seen you before in my life.
Still in Blodgett.
And Blodgett. So, Sabette and I are sitting there, and I said, "Okay, I'm trying to figure out what they were saying over here when we can't really hear some of you about defining..." Yeah, yours is not working, something, because I know you're near it. So, so then I... So, so then I s, you go through the whole thing, then you said, okay, but we haven't talked about the definition. So is this like, is a short-term rental 30 days or less, or is it, I don't know? That, so if I'm watching at home, I'm going, whoa, you know, they've talked about all the meat, but they haven't talked about defining where, when this gets triggered.
Uh, we, we did actually at a previous session.
Okay, so still, I'm sitting at home with my popcorn and my feet up, and I will, may not have seen that prior session, so what is it?
Unfortunately, I don't have the piece of paper in front of me, but at a previous session, we did decide on the def, the wording for the definition of short-term rental, and we moved it to public hearing for the 17th.
So are you going to give me a hint?
I can.
Leanne, would you like to read it?
It hasn't changed for all year. It's the same as it has.
All right, I'm just talking about, so you want to put, when you're communicating with people, you want them to see the total concept of what you're talking about.
So the definition of short-term rental.
The proposed definition.
Proposed, the d, d, definition of short-term rental is the rental of any dwelling unit or portion thereof for an occupancy of less than 30 consecutive days.
Okay, so that's, I, I, somewhere 30 was in my head. Okay, thank you for doing that. All right, so when you do the 17th meeting, I know it's a draft, but can you put it up there?
Certainly.
Please, big print, lights, you know, helping everybody see, and then people at home can see as well. And then, let's see, what other question I had? No, I, I think you've come a long way. The grandfathering thing is always going to get in the way. I think people, my personal opinion is I think people would like to hear that this is just the beginning. In other words, if you put this out there, there's going to have to be some, not only enforcement, but reinforcement of what you've put out there. And it's not just going to be another ordinance that goes out that doesn't get enforced. I mean, something's better than nothing. So if somebody's living next door to a grandfathered, um, short-term rental, and there's noise and all that, is there going to be work on the noise ordinances? Is there going to be some reinforcement of the issues that were brought up about existing bad rent, um, long, uh, short-term rentals? See what I'm saying? I mean, I think you're going to have to communicate that. It may not be your role per se, but what is the plan beyond this?
So certainly we can make it clear to people that enforcement is the responsibility of the code enforcement officer and therefore the board of selectmen. And we can certainly urge those parties to perform the enforcement, but we can't control it.
Right. So what I'm saying is when you are communicating this beyond yourselves and you want voters to vote for it because you've put all this work into it, presumably you are going to sort of give a more holistic, okay, this goes into place, and then down, the downstream, you voters can go to the board of selectmen and talk about the noise ordinance, or you can go to the new planning director whenever we get one and say that the code enforcement officer needs to do a better job or whatever.
Well, I, so I wouldn't necessarily say the code enforcement officer needs to do a better job, but he's spread pretty thin.
What I'm saying is, talk more holistically.
Yeah.
You're putting this out there, you've done all the wording, you're the planning board, what's the plan on how to make this work?
Yeah, I, I understand.
Okay.
To give a practical application, in essence. But just one more point with regard to your mention of the, the noise ordinance, it's never been said to any, anybody on the planning board, as far as I know, that the current ordinance is inadequate.
Then why isn't it being enforced?
Well, that's a separate issue.
It is inadequate.
Thank you.
It, it may be inadequate, but nobody's ever said that to me, though.
Most of it deals with motor vehicles, ATVs, snowmobiles.
The existing, the existing ordinance deals with.
And, uh, construction work between 10:00 PM and 6:00 PM, except on Sundays, till 10:00 AM.
So that doesn't, that's not going to help people with these grandfathered situations? Probably not.
I don't believe, I mean, there is one, I think there are two sections, and I will bring that with me when we discuss this, but there are two sections that are very subjective, which deal with mus, loud music, um, and, uh.
Swearing and all the other stuff we hear about. A lot of swearing in the backyards of, with bachelor parties or whatever, I don't know. So, um, something just escaped me, but, um, I, I think I, I think I covered it, but, um, so, so if.
Talking about the plan, and, and, you know, and I agree with you, I'm not sure that we have a plan. We should be going to the board of selectmen and saying, we've got to do something about this noise ordinance because it's not working.
And we just, yeah, we, the planning board just did all this work, and we don't want it to be a standalone that doesn't work.
Yeah.
And then if you want.
Can I also mention, Anne, that.
Wait a minute, if you want the voters to vote for it, give them a vision of what it can be, especially those who live next door to the grandfathered people.
What it might look like in use.
But none of it's going to work if nobody reports it. If you just complain about it, nothing happens. That's the issue for a lot of people.
People are, people are reporting, I believe, and they're getting no satisfaction. So this, I, I think the message to people that I talk to is, this is a start. We have nothing now. And, oh, I know, the other thought I had was, the good news is, um, that I would say to my fellow, fellow voters, is if we are known to have regulation on the books, we're not going to be attracting all the bottom feeders, the people looking for an investment property that are never going to live here, that don't care.
Well, to your point, it's not just having the regulations on the books, but having them enforced as well.
Yeah, well, yes, that too, but I'm saying, that's why I'm saying it's a start, because something on the books is better than nothing. And the grandfathering, I think, is the bitter pill for a lot of people to get over. But if, if you can talk more broadly, that's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I, oh, can I just make one, one suggestion? It just seems like even if somebody's grandfathered, and they, they are going against some of these, um, well, what, conditions, permits, whatever, if somebody's grandfathered and they're renting to too many people, or they're grandfathered and they're seem to be making a lot of noise all the time, or their, their guests are, or they're grandfathered and they're, don't have smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, it seems like if they do something to come up on our radar, then perhaps they should have to comply with this or something like this.
Legally, we can't do that.
And why not?
Because they're grandfathered.
I mean, that's the law. We have no choice in the matter. I mean, if we could say, okay, everybody's got to comply, that would, I think, from many perspectives, that would be wonderful, but zoning is only good going forward. And under our current zoning ordinance and the Conway, New Hampshire Supreme Court case, we cannot, well, under the Supreme Court's Conway decision, based on our current definition of a dwelling unit, short-term rentals are permitted use in a dwelling unit.
But then also there's Portsmouth that says that they could regulate businesses in a residential district.
But that's why our new, we have definite, new definitions for a dwelling unit, which are based on the Portsmouth definition. Our current definition is basically identical to Conway, and the New Hampshire Supreme Court, in its wisdom, said that if this board went out and rented a house for a weekend, we would be a household.
We would be a what?
And that's what sank the ship.
Household.
One of the things I would suggest is that even the grandfathered people, according to the contracts associated with Airbnb and the RBO and those, um, they are saying that the renter, um, the people who are renting these, these rooms or buildings need to have smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, and all that kind of thing. So there is that, you know, those are basic things which need to be done. You aren't going to have the same kind of ability to deal with septic systems, but, you know, I think that some of those regulations are existing with the contract that those, the people organizing these rentals are dealing with.
More public, public comment?
Yes, Sabette Strowman, I have a, to your point, I don't think you're right. I don't think that Airbnb or VRBO ask for documentation about all of that. Now, maybe I'm wrong. I'm going back a couple of years ago, but, because we rented a few years ago, but I don't know. I just am not sure they're checking on documentation. Do you know?
They are not, I'm sure they're not checking on it, but they are at least saying that you need to have.
They say it, yeah.
And, and in fact, if, if I was somebody going to one of these places and I looked and found there was no smoke detector, I would complain and give them a bad review.
Yeah. Well, and given some of the big accidents that have happened, especially that huge one out west this year, maybe something will happen on their end. But I was just wondering, with the grandfathering, is, did you consider at all something like you have five years? Like, these are the, these are currently in place for any new Airbnb, anyone that is grandfathered has five years to comply.
No, legally, we can't do that. If it's a currently permitted use, there's no way to go back in time and stop them.
Okay. I trust that you've gone down that avenue. I know you've worked hard.
And this has nothing to do with short-term rentals. It has to do with any permitted use.
You can't, you can't say this is going, you're going to be held, so our attorney says we can't take any current property that is renting and hold them to these standards?
That's correct. But, but again.
But other towns.
Just to take rentals out of it, for an example, if there's a gas station in a certain zone, and we make a regulation saying that no gas stations are permitted, it doesn't give a time limit for that gas station, they can stay there as long as they want, as long as they're still a gas station, because they established while it was a permitted use.
Okay.
So the same thing applies here to rentals. If somebody's renting now and it is a permitted use, and we decide it's no longer a permitted use, we can't toss everybody out.
I won't make you go through it again. I know you've worked really hard on the grandfathering thing, and I respect that. Thank you. Thank you for working so hard on this.
One more time, Anne?
Don't take any comfort in Airbnb. We stayed in one that had no smoke detectors and a rotten railing that if I grabbed it, it would have killed me. I complained to Airbnb, they did absolutely nothing. I got like a robotic answer. So they may put it there, but it's baloney.
And whether they do or not, we certainly don't want to rely on them for enforcement.
Oh, good God, no. They're, they just want to make money.
All right, uh, next item on the agenda is.
I, can I bring up one other thing?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Roger.
Um, in the past, when we had a town planner, the town planner would present individual zoning amendments. Um, and I'm wondering if we want to go back in time to when there was no town planner and individual members of the planning board each presented a proposed zoning amendment and kind of explained it to the public so that they would get at least some kind of an explanation.
I think that's a great idea. Does anybody want to volunteer?
No, but I thought Kathy and, and the planner did a really great job last time on TV.
Yeah.
It was great. It was concise.
Yeah, no, I think Roger's point is to make sure that somebody explains them, and you don't have the burden of one person explaining all of them.
Oh.
At the public hearing.
At the public hearing, right.
You were talking about at the public.
I would do short-term rentals.
Yeah, and also Anne's asking about things being up, I mean, who's going to do that?
I'll be, I'll do that.
Okay.
That's not a big deal.
Okay. Can you fix my mic, too?
Stop looking, grab another one.
Yeah, just take one. Can I just bring up one?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. And then we wanted also to get Devon's comment on short-term.
Oh, okay, well.
But go ahead, no, go ahead.
This is about impact fees. A woman came to us at the last meeting and, and wanted a waiver from the impact fees. We did this back, um, '21, I think. We did actually grant a waiver.
Oh, wow.
So that she could pay for it, people could pay for it over time.
Yeah, so, so that was, yes, we, I remember we allowed them to pay over some period of time. However, the recent request was to waive it completely.
Well, okay, but maybe, I mean, maybe she doesn't know that she could ask for something else.
Well, but she qualifies to, for waiving them completely, that's the issue.
No, she does not.
I thought she did.
No, I, I had a discussion with her afterwards, after I investigated it. In our, in our current ordinance, the waiver is for properties that are deed restricted to residents 55 or over. And it's like a 55-plus community, deed restricted, and her property is not deed restricted.
That word restricted.
Yes.
Anyway, it was just a thought that.
But, but still, that is an issue, that there is no form to fill out, to hand in.
Well, no, if it's for deed restricted properties, I would expect it to come up as part of site review.
You think it would?
Yes, because normally a deed restricted property is a development of some kind with multiple units, not an individual house.
Her property is not deed restricted.
No, but I'm thinking like Rachel Estates. So each time one of these comes up for sale, it's just the, the deed restriction bid is attached? So the person knows.
No, no, because the, the, the impact fee is only paid at the initial construction.
New construction, never mind.
Yeah.
It's late.
Yeah, but, but we determined in 2020 is that you do pay it, but it goes as a lien against the property, and then you have a certain number of.
And medical figures, yeah.
To pay the $4,000.
Mm-hmm. All right, Vaughn?
So I, I think I've become aware that the Shoreland regulations that we adopted in March are not either easily found or found at all in our zoning ordinance that's on the website, and the current planner is not using them. She's using an outdated version.
And Leanne, I understand you have an answer to this?
So it might not be easily found.
Are they not under amendments at the top of the?
Yes, so I'm on the, if you go onto the planning board page, and you go into the to, the zoning, or the planning department, and you go into the zoning, on the left-hand side, you're going to see an icon that says new laws, and there's a little, it says number three in parentheses. You click on that, you will actually come up, it comes up right there.
Okay.
The zoning amendment.
My understanding is the enforcement now is based on the old application and the old.
So if you, if you go into Ecode 360, it's not, the, the current one is not shown there, is that?
No, so there is an issue. She, she is correct. So if you actually go into the zoning and you type in, um, 175, it will come up as the old.
Old one.
The old one. If you don't know that that exists, the new laws, which many people don't, and you don't know where to look for it, you're not going to find the new zoning amendment.
So, uh, then is the task then to have Ecode 360 updated to reflect the new ordinance?
The town clerk and I are, the town clerk is currently in communication with representatives.
Okay, so somebody's working on it.
We're trying to work on it, but I don't think it's going to get done until April.
Oh.
But how do people, people know what they're supposed to?
They don't.
They, they don't. Um, what, is, can you enlighten me as to why it might be till April?
Well, we're trying to figure out why it wasn't done. If it was done in the new laws, why wasn't it reflected? So we're waiting for an answer.
Okay.
So we're in the process of getting answers.
Okay.
So this is not something that.
To be continued.
One of you guys at the desk does. We send it out to have it done.
Yes.
Is, is there any way in the ordinance that's easily found to have an asterisk that sends you to the right ordinance?
A note in Ecode 360 pointing you to the right place.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the, the unfortunate thing is that I don't think anybody in the office knew that. Well, the unfortunate thing is that I don't think anybody in the office knew that this regulation had passed because Tavas didn't tell them. It's that simple. And so...
Is this the only one, or are there others that were passed that didn't get incorporated?
This was the...
This is it? Yeah.
All right. But it sounds like we're on top of it now.
And the other thing you said, Vaughn, you used the wrong applications?
Yeah, that I'm not aware of.
So I've been told by people who have put forward applications that the application form does not reflect the new regulations.
The shoreland impact?
Yeah.
Form? Is that what you're talking about?
No, the shoreline application. The application for...
Right, the Tonawulfboro Shoreland application?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's...
Interestingly enough...
Of the trees came up.
Well, interestingly enough, that was actually getting revised today.
Today?
Today.
Okay.
So...
Awesome.
But know that even though the application reflects that, the interim town planner has been reviewing those applications based on...
The new.
The amended.
Okay. Yep.
And she has been right along?
Mm-hmm. Okay. She's been aware of the regulation, the change in the regulation. She was aware of that change.
Okay.
It's just the application didn't reflect it.
All right. Thank you.
And that's why it's being amended.
Roger?
Do we want to parcel out the zoning amendments? Since it's getting later and everybody will volunteer so they can go home.
That's a great idea. So Roger, you're going to do all short-term rental, is that correct?
I'll do the definition and the short-term rental ordinance. Do you want me to do the dwelling unit in there as well?
You can do the dwelling unit, or I'll do it. I'm happy to do it. I'll take dwelling unit. We also have conservation, right?
I could do the conservation subdivision.
All right.
And then we got multifamily.
Anybody want to volunteer for multifamily? I guess then I'll take it. And that covers it, doesn't it? I'm sorry? Oh, conditional use permit.
You want me to do that?
All right. Roger will do conditional use permit.
Somebody else would like to?
Does that cover it?
So when is this presentation happening?
17.
17.
All right. The last item is approval of the minutes. The first set of minutes is from November 12th, the draft minutes. Does anybody have any corrections or comments? Hearing none. I'll make a motion to approve the draft minutes for November 12th.
Second.
Kathy seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right. The next is the minutes for November 19th. Any comments or corrections?
I have an addition on page three, just above multifamily dwellings. As Peter Goodman questioned, the number of occupants, including children. And I think, Doug, you then ended up replying that it is the number of rooms plus two to include having children in the room, or something similar.
I'm sorry, where is that on the page?
It's three lines down, four lines down.
I see, yes.
Peter questioned the number of occupants. And I just think that there should be something saying that the answer is that it is the number of rooms plus two, children.
Well, I believe it was two per bedroom plus two.
Correct.
Yes.
And that just makes it clearer for somebody reading the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections.
I've got one more on the back page.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Julie.
I was surprised Roger didn't catch it. Halfway down, it starts at the end, Denadi. All the way to the end, you should question whether the permit remains with the property or the owner. And Roger stated the permit would remain with the unit. We just looked at all this, that the short-term rental permit stays with the owner of the So if the house is sold, there is no more permit. Correct? So the word "unit" should say owner. Right, Roger? That's your words.
Um...
Back page.
Back page. It remains with the owner.
Correct. It says that you said "unit."
So the last...
Hopefully I didn't, but...
No, no, but the last word should be changed from "unit" to "owner."
To "owner," right. Just making sure that's what you really wanted to say.
Yep.
Okay.
I know. You're absolutely right.
All right. Kathy, you want to try again?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All aye?
Epstein.
Vaughn, it's Zane's. Any other motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion? I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.